Okay, I'd like to call to order if everyone will stand and I'll have Commissioner Gonzalez say the prayer.
Heavenly Father, Lord, we come before you today just giving you thanks for all the blessings that we receive. Father, we ask for your guidance and your patience and your understanding as we proceed with this meeting. Lord, we're thankful to live in a country where we're able to have meetings like this, open meetings, and we ask for your guidance so we can do the best for what's the benefit of San Juan County. Thank you. Amen.
Commissioner Lanier, we at least the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. All right, so at this time, we'll go ahead and we have appreciation, a presentation appreciation by Bloomfield Police Chief Francisco. Is that correct? Okay, come on up.
Thank you for having us here. So we just want to give a plaque of appreciation to the Sheriff's Office and the county for their hard work and all they did for us during the funeral for Officer Contreras who lost. Especially Sheriff Ferrari, if you want to come out there. They really went out of their way to help us out in our time of need, and we couldn't have done what we did and got through it without the county and our surrounding agencies, Farmington, Aztec, Fire Department, everybody. But Shane did extra because he actually helped on the funeral, this funeral, so really appreciate what he did, Sheriff's Office did, and the support from the county. So I just want to present you with this.
Can we have gentlemen take a picture of this group?
Make sure you get me in there and get them.
Okay, thank you very much for coming. Thank you, Sheriff. All right, now, we have a proclamation honoring Taylor Armenta. Do we have something that we need to queue up or?
Commissioner Gonzalez.
This is, I'd like to introduce Taylor Armenta, her mother Audra Armenta, her sister Sierra Armenta. These girls are upcoming barrel racers, and Taylor just accomplished something that, wow, very few have accomplished. And we're going to run a little bit of a video here, and then I'll read what we're doing. I'll read it first. Let me read it first, okay. Proclamation honoring Taylor Armenta. Whereas Taylor Armenta, 14-year-old barrel racer from Bloomfield, New Mexico, competed in the National Junior High School Finals Rodeo held June 22nd through the 28th in Des Moines, Iowa. And whereas Taylor Armenta matched up against 180 barrel racers, winning both the go-rounds with times of 14.713 and 14.625. And whereas in the finals, she had the winning round of 14.621 with a total aggregate of 43.959, thus sweeping all three go-rounds, making her the 2025 National Junior High School Finals Rodeo Barrel Racing Champion. And whereas Taylor Armenta has now won 12 saddles, 150 buckles, and a lifetime earnings of over $350,000. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of San Juan County, New Mexico hereby declares August 19th, 2025, as Taylor Armenta's Day in San Juan County, New Mexico, in recognition of her national championship. Congratulations, Taylor. Stand up, stand up, stand up. Stand up and be welcome, ladies. That's quite a deal.
Thank you. Go ahead, gentlemen. So if you'll come up and just stand right here, we'll move the podium out of the way and bring your family up too, and the commissioners will come down.
Congratulations.
Everybody right here, count to three. One, two, three. One more. Very good.
Okay, thank you so much. And we have a proclamation that we have a frame up here and we'll get it to you. So, it'll come in just a second. So, all right. So now, what I'll need is go into the Board of Finance.
Motion to go into Board of Finance.
Second.
You have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Welcome, Treasurer Talby.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. My first order of business is just a little bit of housekeeping. Every year prior to September 1st, we waive this, or we implement this resolution waiving a $5 minimum penalty on delinquent property taxes, and that gives our already delinquent property owners a little bit of tax relief going into the next tax year. So, I am requesting that you approve 25-26-18, waiving the $5 minimum penalty on delinquent property taxes.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments for our treasurer? Okay. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 25-26-18, waiving the $5 minimum penalty on delinquent property taxes.
I'll second. I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm really excited about the next order of business. Two years ago, I came and I gave my annual investment presentation, and I was super excited because I had exceeded $1 million in property tax investment earnings. And then last year, I mean, I was excited again because it looks like we earned like 2.6. And this year, we have earned $3.7 million in investment income.
Wow.
And that is the best we've done since June of 2008.
Wow.
So, a high rate environment has helped the last couple of years, but I think, I think good administration has increased my, my average investment levels, which helps me to maximize those investments. So, the return on investments was 0.96 over the same period in 2024, and the total invest in dollars increased 175%. And that's over FY 2021. So if you look on that little, I added this chart this year, but you look where we were in 2021, we had $35 million in our investment portfolio. We've, the last two years, we've been 85, 90, and that's just an average number. Sometimes it's higher, sometimes it's lower, but I think that's just prudent management. And so I'm grateful to our administration for the opportunity to play with the money. So, we should, you know, we should continue to see some decent earnings through 2025 with my investment ladder. Rates seem to be holding pretty stable, and I ladder out when I do invest, so these rates, the rates that I'm getting now, I can go out four years. So we should see some decent returns over the next few years. I don't know if we'll hit, I'd love to hit 4 million, you know, maybe next year. So, anyway, I will stand for any questions.
Are there any questions or comments?
I just want to say thank you sincerely for your excellent job, and I, this is really, you show true stewardship of what happens at the county, and I appreciate everybody that helps with that as well. So, thank you for your professionalism and dedication, Carol.
Thank you, and it is a collective effort between administration. Finance has a lot to do with it, and so I'm grateful for where I work and the people I work with.
We're going to hold you to those 4 million next year. Good job.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right, now I need a motion to go out of Board of Finance.
Motion to go out of Board of Finance.
Second.
You have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, now, moving into the regular meeting, I need an approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or anything?
I'm sure there are not.
Okay. Okay, dump a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda asked presented.
Okay, I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Hearing, any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, we'll go ahead and move into the consent agenda, and it looks like there's 11 of those, so I may need to take a drink and remove all this.
A water.
Yes, of course, it's right here. So, consideration of regular meeting minutes for July 29, 2025, consideration of Treasurers' Check Register for July 2025, number three, consideration of Finance Check Register for July 2025, consideration of projects submitted for state fire marshal grant funding, consideration of Resolution Number 25-26-19, supporting New Mexico Department of Transportation award of K-Linda Grant Programming Funding, number six, consideration of memorandum of agreement with the New Mexico Department of Agriculture for non-native theado fight removal, whatever that is, and repar, yeah, I was bony about that, restoration.
That's a bad tree.
Salt cedar and Russian olive.
Why didn't they say that?
Yeah, simplify it.
And then number seven, consideration to certify FY 2025 Annual Inventory, number eight, consideration of Third Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement for Sovereign Center and Joint Intervention Program Services with San Juan Regional Medical Center and the City of Farmington, number nine, consideration of Intergovernmental Agreement for Alternative Response to you into ARU Program with the City of Farmington, number 10, ratification of the annual 2025 Emergency Management Performance Grant Program that was submitted to the state in Mexico on July 17, 2025, number 11, ratification of the annual 2025 State Homeland Security Grant Program that was submitted to the state in Mexico on August 6. All right, do you have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the 11 consent agenda items.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. That was a lot of words. All right, so now we'll move on to new business, consideration of approval of annual Section 8 Management Assessment Program Certification, and I have Charlotte Stanley that will be presenting to us. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Charlotte Stanley. I am the Executive Director for the Housing Authority, and today I can require you to ask for approval of our Section 8 Management Assessment Program, also known as SEMAP. Sorry, I get nervous doing this.
Okay, you're doing great.
So, the housing, the public housing agencies that administer the Housing Choice Roucher Programs get, get measured in our performance in 13 key areas. These key indicators include proper selection of applications from the waiting list, rent reasonable, ratification of family income, utility allowance schedules, timely annual inspections, ensure units comply with housing quality standards, use of correct payment standards, and the annual exams. And I am proud to say that the Housing Authority has had 16 high-performance awards, hoping to be 17 this year.
That's awesome, thank you, and congratulations on that. So, that's a pretty high standard right there with all of the, the key indicators. So, are there any questions?
I don't have any.
Commission, okay, you have any? All right, so then we'll need a motion to approve?
Madam Chair, motion to approve the annual SEMAP Certification.
I'll second. Okay, I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Stanley. All right, next on the agenda, I have Mr. Svejder, consideration of withdrawal from Title III for senior center services for FY 26.
Madam Chair, County Commission, I come before you requesting your consideration to withdraw from Title III non-metro senior services for San Juan County. And the reason for this request is year after year, our funding has been cut. For FY 26, we have learned that our funding had been cut down to $81,811. Now, this is a program that provides funds to San Juan County for mills and transportation. But what also comes with this program is strenuous reporting requirements. In fact, county staff, Michelle Murray, full voucher for this, they spend an exorbitant amount of time dedicating compliance requirements, reporting requirements to Title III. Now, let me be clear, when we are bringing this request to you, we are not looking to cut back services. In fact, we're looking to enhance services. We're looking at a cost saving of $90,000, so this would offset the $81,000 that we would, we would lose out on, but we would make it up with salary savings, and we would dedicate that for services that are more than just mills and transportation. That would include activities, that would include programming, that would include, include the opportunity for seniors to get out of the community and to visit surrounding areas like other facilities in and around New Mexico. We believe that it's more important, it's just as important to have a mill, but it is also important to get out, get the social, both for the physical and the mental aspect of getting our seniors to these places that they desire to go. We've been in this program since 2021. We feel that this would be an opportunity because we have some positions that are open to be restructured. We would try this for one year. Something was to go foul in the year, we could always look to get back in when this, this application comes out in, in calendar year of '26. So we believe it would be a great opportunity for San Juan County to try this, to enhance our services, and hopefully provide a better value to our senior community. And with that, I will stand for any questions, but I also have Michelle Murray who will be able to answer specific questions a heck of a lot better than I sure can.
Thank you, Mr. Svejder, for that. And so my question for Michelle is, how much time was taken to do these assessments, and how much staff was generally taken? Did it take?
No, I'm sure for 2000, last fiscal year, it took us 800 hours of paperwork. That's approximately how many hours was spent on just paperwork.
Okay, that's a lot, lot of time spent on this. Any other questions or comments?
Michelle, just for, for everybody's benefit, can you give us an example of some of the activities and programs that you're wanting to implement for the seniors?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Lanier, what we, what our ultimate goal is, is we want to take them out. We want to let them live the life to the fullest that they can live at this point. We're thinking hiking, we're thinking rafting. We used to do a chilly run-up to hatch every year. We haven't been able to do that in probably 10 years, but we want to take them to the state fair, we want to take them to the conference on aging. We just, right now, we can't do that because of the amount of time we have to spend on paperwork and do, you know, and my staff do their jobs as well.
How many people does it take to do this work?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gonzalez, we have a staff at Lower Valley of five. I have one person that does paperwork all day long. And then in Blanco, I have two people, but I, I also will send her out maybe once every other week just to do paperwork. In general, our assessments for, for one individual, if they're gonna, if we're gonna take meals to their house, it takes us anywhere from two to three hours. We have to go to their home, we have to do the assessment, and then the drive time back. We serve at Lower Valley, we serve all the way up to the state line, the Colorado State Line on the Platte Highway. We serve all the way to Hogback, and then we serve all the way up to the reservation porter, and we do have a guy on N-36. And then we serve. Sorry.
That's a lot.
Madam Chair, this is a question for.
If you still can.
Sorry, in Blanco, we go all the way up to Navajo Dam, and then City of Bloomfield, City Line.
Okay, so long ways.
A long way.
This is a question for Mike. It says that we're, the county will have to meet strict programmatic and reporting obligation. So if we do that, will the centers be doing that, or the county? How's that going to work?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Totajini, you referring to the current agreement that we have with the City of Farmington and our other partners? Well, that's exactly what we'd be alleviating ourselves from, is the strict programmatic reporting and requirements associated with the state's involvement by way of the grant funding that we receive. I think it would be great if, if Ms. Murray'd be so willing to share, you know, we have to meet dietary nutrition requirements set forth by the Older Americans Act, but there's a state nutritionist that currently oversees the program, and if, we have a menu that meets all the guidelines but has the word mocha within the, the menu, that menu's been rejected before. And I don't know if you want to elaborate on that, but that's the type of, what we feel like is unnecessary oversight and bureaucracy that we have been dealing with for quite some time, okay with it as, as long as the revenue's there to support it. But when we see the, the revenue declining like this, and the bureaucracy and reporting requirements doing this, we thought it would be wise to bring this to you as an opportunity for a one-year trial experiment. Because we have some staff vacancies, it just timed out perfectly that it would make sense to give this a shot. So, I don't know if I, would it be okay, Commissioner, if I could let Ms. Murray speak on that item?
Yes, please.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Totajini, so, in general, it takes us probably 10 hours a month to submit a menu, and then the state nutritionist will submit it back. There's times on those menus, we have to serve three different vegetables to meet her guidelines. We're throwing away 500, 600 pounds of food a week because the seniors just, they don't eat it, and by our policies and procedures, we can't send it with them. The food cannot leave the senior center. So, it's a lot of waste.
Yeah.
If we, if you chose to take this program over and we leave Title III, I just think we would be able to make better menus. We would be able to create menus that would still meet the Older Americans Act and also meals that they would eat, because there's some stuff right now, they'll send us, seniors don't eat Gabonzo beans, throw them away, and they're really expensive, but we have to serve that. If we got caught not serving what is on that menu, we are in big trouble.
I have another question. Shiprock Senior Center is closed, I noticed. So are you getting more clients down your way?
Absolutely.
Okay, right. Does that help, or how does that work?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Totajini, it's hard because they won't communicate with us if they're closing, and so we get a, a lot of people that we don't know are coming. And so every, every day, it's just a crystal ball, how many meals do we make today? Depending on what it is, my staff's amazing, and they'll be like, okay, on Navajo Taco Day, we're going to make extra because we know extra people come. But when Shiprock closes and they don't communicate that with us, we see those numbers, you know, increase, and we hope we have enough food.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Commissioner McDaniel, do you have a question?
No, I didn't have a question. If nobody else had any questions, I was going to make a motion unless there are any more questions.
I don't have any more questions.
Mr. Svejder.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, and I apologize, I failed to mention this earlier, but we did inform our partner entities, Aztec, Bloomfield, and Farmington of our intention to step away for this, this one-year trial.
And it's a one-year, right? That's what it says in our documents, so.
I've got a question.
Go ahead.
Why, why isn't there any communication from Shiprock to you folks, letting you know how many people are coming? Is it, I'd like to know why.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gonzalez, I have no idea. I've been doing this for a really long time, over 13, 14 years, and it's never been, and I don't know if it's lack of staff, why they're closing. I know at one, one point in time, it was, they ran out of food, and so they're, they couldn't buy more food because there was no money for food. So I honestly, I, I don't know. I don't know why. It's not communicated with us.
Wow, okay.
Any other questions? Okay, Commissioner McDaniel.
Yes, ma'am, I'd like to make a motion that the San Juan County withdraw from Title III for senior center services for the fiscal year 2026 in accordance with the presentation made by Mr. Svejder.
I'll second that. I, I remember how the, all of you who were the. I, I remember how the, all of you who were the directors of the centers, all that paperwork you used to do. So I, I second that.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Commissioner McDaniel.
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to make a motion that the San Juan County withdraw from Title III for senior center services for the fiscal year 2026 in accordance with the presentation made by Mr. Sivadra.
I'll second that. I, I remember how the, all of you who were the directors of the centers, all that paperwork you used to do. So I, I second that.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you very much for your presentation. All right. Next in, we'll have, our county manager might start the consideration of amended and restated special contract with the New Mexico Gas Company for the gas line extension to San Juan County Industrial Park.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This item, as well as the next one, are related, specific to the extension of the gas line approximately thirteen miles to the, to the county industrial park. You all may recall that we've received a grant from the New Mexico Economic Development Department to help facilitate this project, and ultimately to, to make our industrial park and building ready for a, a new tenant, which we have in Pesco, starting a lease up there, starting September first. Initially, this project was targeted at being a one-point-eight-million-dollar project back in 2021, and then in 2023, we had New Mexico Gas Company come to us, indicating their estimates were showing the line to be slightly more expensive at two-point-nine million dollars. And kudos to the New Mexico Economic Development Department. They said, you know, we can cover that entire cost, so they provided us the additional funding to get us up to the two-point-nine-million-dollar number. There've been a number of delays with this project related to engineering services. They initially were planning on, on doing this design in-house, and they ended up having to contract that workout. There's also been some delays related to the acquisition of, of right-of-way that they weren't expecting. So, long story short, we received word a little, little under two months ago from the New Mexico Gas Company that the estimate had changed. And I said, okay, well, what's the new number? You know, there's construction inflation, et cetera. Six-point-one-million dollars was the number that was provided to us. And so we obviously did a lot of research with them to find out exactly what was driving that cost, and seemed to be primarily related to engineering services for the contractual piece of that. And we actually had information provided to us from the previous project manager who since retired, that the county wouldn't be obligated for those costs. And so ultimately, we were able to negotiate a new cost, really specifically related to the bid they recently put out, where they actually had a hard number on construction, in addition to legitimate costs associated with inspection of the project and, and other right-of-way acquisition fees. So ultimately, between San Juan County and the New Mexico Economic Development Department and New Mexico Gas Company, we were able to arrive at a, a new number, which everybody agrees is, is much more reasonable and favorable in getting the project completed, which was just a little bit over four-point-one million and change, as you see in your staff summary. Once again, the New Mexico Economic Development Department stepped up. They are willing to provide another million dollars in funding to see this project happen. They really are excited about Pesco and the new eighty, eighty-four economic-based jobs that will be created there, the two-hundred or so residents that would have the opportunity along the route to connect to natural gas on the La Plata corridor there. And their only ask was that the county provide some contribution to the project, and that contribution was approximately two-hundred thousand dollars that they're asking for. Plus, we had included another twenty-five thousand dollars for potential change orders that would be split with New Mexico Gas Company. If that funding wasn't utilized, it would revert back to the county coffers. We do have sufficient capital reserve funding to accommodate that cost, and ultimately, that's about a four-point-five percent match on a, on a four-point-one-million-dollar project, which we find that to be very reasonable, and take that any day in the week with other matches that we're asked to, to provide. So, so this first item is specifically related to the contract with New Mexico Gas Company. It's a contract we previously had entered into at a much lower amount. So this contract is reflecting the new number of four-point-one million, four-point-one, three, four million, one-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty dollars, which is inclusive of New Mexico gross receipts tax, which in the unincorporated part of the county is six-point-five percent. So, and then we'll deal with the funding piece on the next, next item. And so that's what we're asking for, is your approval of this contract. Couple notes, the contractor's in place and ready to go, just awaiting the delivery of this contract. They plan to start after Labor Day. And the construction window that they provided, New Mexico Gas Company, is that they anticipate being done anytime from Thanksgiving to December seventeenth. We have visited with Pesco to understand what their specific needs are related to natural gas and the use of the facility. As they're moving in September first, they're gonna have a ramp-up in, in terms of getting the facility ready for production. And so they don't anticipate the need for natural gas, it's, it's just gonna be utilized for heating of the facility, not for any industrial manufacturing purposes. The September and October, they don't anticipate the need for any gas, and so they would be okay while that line's being built. There may be a need for some temporary gas in November and December while the project's being finished, and we're working with New Mexico Gas Company to try to shore up what that might look like, based upon consumption that Pesco is anticipating for those months. So, worst-case scenario, we could probably keep a majority of the, of the plumbing fixtures and other areas of the building heated through electric heaters that need the, which, by the way, was the primary way we kept the building warm over the last two winters. So, not ideal situation, but given Pesco certainly understands the dilemma that we've been put in, and the delays from New Mexico Gas Company, and so they're supportive. Looking forward to seeing a gas line run to the facility. So with that, I stand for any questions you have relative to the special contract and agreement with New Mexico Gas Company, and we can deal with the funding on the next item.
And I just wanted to reiterate that, in our summary, that it shows the economic benefit of eighty-four new economic-based jobs with this, as well as the service to two-hundred residential customers as well, so.
The potential.
Potential. Right, right. All right. So any other questions?
Let's just start. This is my district area, La Plata, so this is very beneficial to them.
It is. It is the, the, just for awareness, you know, the line leaves off on, on Plata Highway, Highway 170, just right near the, the fire station. They would extend up Highway 170, and then eventually hit County Road 1191. And so it's not gonna take Highway 70 all the way up, and that was to avoid conflicts with some, some cultural sites that are known along the Highway 170 corridor. And so there'll certainly be some opportunity within that proximity, but, but lateral lines can be run to Highway 170 all along that corridor. And we actually had a public input meeting, Commissioner, back, I think in 2023, where we invited the community to come and share with us their interest in the gas line, and it was pretty resounding attendance, roughly fifty people, as I recall, at the La Plata Schoolhouse. And, and they, they would be quite happy to get off the propane and to find their way onto natural gas because of the costs associated with propane. We anticipate there'd be quite a few folks looking to hook up, so.
With all the information, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the amended and restated special contract with New Mexico Gas Company for the gas line extension to the San Juan County Industrial Park.
Okay. Did you have a comment?
No, I was gonna.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a first and second. Any other questions or comments? All right. With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, and we'll move on to number four.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioner. So this third amendment to the intergovernmental agreement between San Juan County and the New Mexico Economic Development Department, kind of shared the history, you know, the reason this is the third amendment. We started at, you know, one-point-eight, and then we moved to two-point-nine, and now the Economic Development Department's willing to bring their contribution up to three-million-nine-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty dollars of state funding to outfund the four-point-one-million-dollar project cost. So, once again, I just want to publicly thank New Mexico Economic Development Department. They have been committed to this project from the get-go and continue to show their commitment by providing this additional funding. So, and I can stand for any questions you have on the one-page amendment.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Mr. Stark? Okay, do I have any, a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the third amendment to intergovernmental agreement between New Mexico Economic Development Department and San Juan County for gas line extension to the San Juan County Industrial Park.
I'll say.
Do you have a first and second? Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Stark. So now, continue on, county, from you, county manager report.
Oh, okay.
Keep on.
Well, keep on, keep on. I'd like to just start off, want to talk about the county fair, a big event that just took place, and all that happened there. Before we do that, I think I'd like to start off by, I know, Madam Chair, you had the opportunity to, to recognize Ms. Coon, our county clerk, for her recent designation as a certified elections registration administrator, the highest professional achievement for election officials in the United States.
Thank you, Chairman, and Mike, for that nice comments. It was a long process. I started in 2020 during COVID, and trying to get it done in between elections, and all that was difficult, but it was done. And I'd like to mention, too, that Tanya Shelby also has hers, and so we're probably the only one in the state that is both the chief deputy and the county clerk.
Congratulations to her, too.
Thank you. Tanya's had hers for a long time.
Oh, okay. Good to know.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Madam Chair, just a comment. You know, with their certification, every ten years, when we have to read district, and all those questions and issues, it's so nice that both of them have that background.
I agree with you. Thank you for that.
Indeed.
All right.
Well, and then, the only other item I had was just, and I, since we have the Fair Board President here, it'd be worthy of maybe having him come up, if he's so willing. I know we have Ms. Murray to talk about the county fair and the success this year, both, I think, with record attendance, as well as a record livestock sale. And, and then just, I publicly want to thank the Fair Board for everything they do to make that event a, a success. And then, of course, our staff, our public safety professionals who are there tending to, over a hundred thousand people that, that come through the gates. I even have a specific number now, I don't know where, that's been, being worked on, but anyway, if you're okay, I'd like to defer some time to Mr. Echols.
Sure, that's fine. If you'll just identify yourself, just for a matter of public record.
Madam Chair, members of the commissioners, I'm Bob Echols, San Juan County Fair Board President. We thought last year, 2024, was a record year. I can say that 2025 is a record year. We're in the process of finalizing figures, but our attendance is gonna be in excess of a hundred thousand people. Our livestock sale, when we shut the books Saturday afternoon, was at, right at about nine-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand dollars. We leave the sale open for add-ons for thirty days, so we're expecting that the sale total will be over a million dollars. And that's just mind-blowing. We are so fortunate to have the support in this county of the buyers, the people that come out and support exhibitors and purchase their animals, and allow them then to pay for their expenses, money for the next year's animals. I can tell you that if you're in the steer business, you're starting next month looking for steers, it's a year-round activity. We are so blessed to have the support that we have, not only from the county and from all the citizens, from the Geek Park staff with Steve and Michelle and their people. They work many hundreds of hours, putting up with what we want to do. We want to move a table here, and we want to put a panel here, and they just smile and they do it. And so we couldn't do it without them. It's, looking back here, several years ago, we thought the fair, when it was a sale, was at two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. We thought that was a phenomenal amount. I, I would guess to say right now, there's not hardly a fair else in New Mexico that succeeded a million dollars in our sale. I, I don't think the state fair will exceed our amount.
That's a reason.
We're very blessed for all your support. And once again, we appreciate all the activity and all the kids and the parents and everybody that helps put this fair on, so we're so blessed. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Do you know how many young people are involved in showing animals?
Between, between the animals and the indoor exhibits and the 4H and the FFA program, seen an excess of six-hundred students, six-hundred exhibitors.
Okay.
So it's, it's just not, you know, it's just not livestock, it's, it's the indoor exhibitors, and, and so we have really, we have a very, very good 4H and FFA program here in the county. Very fortunate.
Yep. Commissioner Totodini?
Well, I have someone to honor that, with the fair, and that's Heather Dosstaller.
She is.
Oh, she's over there. Okay.
I'm a step away.
Okay. Okay, come up to the podium. I was a member of 4H, and then my colleague, Bill Nolan, that I taught with at Shiprock High, was very active with the FFA. But Heather, today I want to recognize you for all the hard work and dedication you've made, because it's a lasting impact on our San Juan County Fair. For the past several years, Heather has been the heart behind Waterfowl Barn, giving her time, energy, and passion to support both the animals and the kids who care for them. She has spent countless hours ensuring the barn is safe, clean, and welcoming, while also cheering on 4H FFA and open show participants with unwavering encouragement. And you mentioned the involvement of youth. Heather's commitment goes far beyond providing supplies. She creates an environment where young people feel valued and proud of their work. Her long hours and tireless efforts reflect not just dedication, but a deep love for agriculture and the next generation who will carry it on forward. Agriculture, like your son, Mr. Stark. Because of Heather, the Waterfowl Barn has become more than a barn. It's a place of growth, pride, and inspiration. Heather, I thank you for your selfless service, your passion, and the incredible difference you continue to make in your county. And I had a plaque made for you, and also, Channel Four always does that, pay it forward. I got a surprise for you in there.
Oh, wow.
When I heard her story, I thought, you know, this young lady, she's up to... So, I went out of my way, and I'm gonna do something special.
Thank you so much. And you funded our barn, you and your McDaniels.
Yes, we did.
And so we were able to give those buckles to the two winners, which hasn't happened. And so it was just such a moment, they were just blown away that they had actually gotten included in their buckles this year, and it was a moment for me to be able to give that to them, and you guys helped me do that, so thank you so much. I'm very grateful. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. I'm honored to be so. I enjoy it greatly, but that means a lot.
Your passion, you just have.
It's come a long way. Thank you. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I'm honored to be so. I enjoy it greatly.
Your passion, you just have.
It's come a long way. Thank you. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And so, did you get money? That's what it's supposed to be about. I hope so. Thank you, Commissioner Tardachini. That was very special. So, okay, then, if there's no other questions or comments, Mr. Stark?
That concludes my report.
Is that your conclusion? Okay. And there's a picture up here, too, of Heather in the waterfowl.
So, we had 56 birds in total between geese and ducks, and it was mostly 4H for a few little entries. And I donated almost 112 hours in eight days.
Wow. Wow, that's awesome.
We provided all the decorations, the bedding. We do the pails, all the supplies. And then, we present the two buckles. And I just, it's incredible to see these kids. We watched them work hard the whole year, then we watched them all week, and then cried from the sidelines from the sale to, you know, watching them go all the way through auction. So, it's pretty incredible.
Thank you.
Good deal.
Thank you. All right. So, there's no more from our county manager. We'll go on to reports from elected officials or department heads. Okay, Nick?
I'm listening to the phone.
Oh.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, commissioners. I'd like to continue to provide you all with bridge progress updates until such time as we're, we're once again open to traffic. And in the kind of interim between these meetings, as I mentioned last meeting, Devin is maintaining a page on our website that will give you an update week to week. We are, I am giving him a three-week look ahead each week. So, the great news is, on Road 3500, project is proceeding as it should. Schedule for the next three weeks is next week. The bridge roof, or the culvert roof and the bridge deck is to be poured. That'll represent roughly 85% of the concrete work on that project being done. Don't have on the three-week look ahead yet, backfill. Once you start to see backfill in those reports, I think you can maybe interpret that reopening is somewhat imminent. On the Road 3000 project, we continue to struggle with water intrusion issues. We're to have poured the gray beam slab for that structure last week. That continues to be pushed based on groundwater intrusion. Trying to be respectful of the folks that live there, we aren't running pumps 24 hours a day, so basically, half a day is spent each day getting the project back to where it was the day before. Put our heads together on that. Have a plan for a more passive water management plan that the, as of this morning in our weekly meeting with the contractor, is being put in place this week. They intend to work through the weekend with the optimistic schedule of installing that gray beam or pouring the concrete for that gray beam next week. But we'll say, once that is done, we are now on made infrastructure, meaning it, you know, belongs to humans and not nature. I think that the schedule will be much more predictable as soon as that beam is in place. So, that's my update for you today. I would be certainly happy to answer any questions that I can now. And again, I know it's sometime before our next scheduled meeting is this group, but week to week, we will be publishing updates. On that webpage, if you have curiosity or if you hear from your constituents, I would certainly point them to my office or that webpage.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments for Mr. Perel?
Thanks for the update.
Thank you for attention to all the detail. All right, any other department heads? All right, I don't see anybody coming up. So, at this time, it's comments and input from the general public. Comments are accepted in person, limited to three minutes, to subjects the commission has not previously discussed or for which formal action has not been taken. No formal action will be taken at this meeting that relates to comments or inputs from the general public. Would anybody like to come up to the podium, identify themselves, and speak to the commission? Okay, go ahead. Good afternoon.
Good evening, commissioners, and also Mike. I just wanted to share with you.
Please identify yourself.
My name is Etta Arvizo.
Thank you.
And I'm from Eastern Navajo, and also just wanted to share with you that we recently had our National Navajo Co-Talker Day. And just to share with you that one day, we'd like to see this on the calendar. And we drove down to help the families, and it was a good turnout. So, and thank you for having a monument out here. So, I think everybody needs to know it's the National Navajo Co-Talker Day. So, and then also, I did call Winderock on the MOU 157. Am I correct, Mike?
Oh, that's correct.
That hopefully that, the agreement and everything with the Navajo Nation Department of Transportation, hopefully that Mr. Tom Patero had faxed you the signature. And I would call the president's office, they signed it and sent it. So, thank you. And then, hopefully, we get the roads, projects going and on 7600, from off of 550 all the way across to McKinley to Pavlov and Todd, because I do volunteer work for the people that don't have rainwater and electricity. So, haul water out of our own expanse to some of the people out there. So, that's why we need improvement on the roads and that road. And hopefully, we contact the right people from Gallup, you know, that's the county commissioners, to meet halfway to support improvement. So, that's what I wanted to share. And thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Arvizo, for that. All right. Do we have any other public comments?
My name is Dennis Walker. I live in Middle Mason, New Mexico. Just thought I'd come down here and give you a little update. One thing I want to do is thank the county very much for making our road magged, wider. It needs more work. And one thing I wanted to ask is, what can we do to help with our roads there? I'll get back with you on that. I know it's not the time, but that's what's on my mind, is to see what the community can do. We have issues with our ditches and culverts. And throughout the period of time, things haven't followed as per a rule of thumb that a certain size culvert should go in, and who's to put it in and who's to maintain it. I've made myself to get involved with that. As far as my sewer system there, nothing done from RJV. I'm working on finishing up my formal complaint to the RCP, RP, PC, PRC, I'm sorry. Old age deluxers. Anyway, and we're adding to it. We're trying to, I am trying to get other people in the community involved, because my sewer actually involves what's going on throughout the whole place. And that's kind of all I've got to report at this time. But I'm very thankful that the road that we come into our development was worked on. Spent quite a few days on it. It was actually nice to drive out of there without not having to keep your tongue in your mouth because you're biting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walker. All right. Do we have any other public comments? Okay, I'm not seeing anybody moving. So, at this time, then, I need a motion to go into closed session.
Madam Chair, I move that we go into closed executive session to discuss the disposition of real property, namely, one, real estate for access and energy transmission purposes over a parcel adjoining Road 6480 near Kirtland; and, two, acceptance of a donation of land adjacent to the new Cooperative Extension Service building.
Second.
Okay, I have a first and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Hearing done, motion carries. We'll go into closed session.
Aye opposed? Hearing done, motion carries. We'll go into closed session.
So now I need a motion to go back in open session.
I move that we go out of closed session and back into an open session.
Oh, second.
All right, I have first and second all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, so at the end...
Wait, you have, I have one more thing I agree.
Okay, go ahead.
We have returned from the closed session. The matters discussed in the closed session were limited to those specified in the motion for a closed session.
Okay. And...
You have your agenda item now.
Yes. So this is what end up needing. So is there, are there any other questions or discussions for Mr. Sevadra?
That would be, if you can read that item.
Oh, okay.
That they're coming back in.
This one?
Yeah, number five, yes.
Okay. This is a consideration of donation of land adjacent to the new cooperative extension building on Gossit Drive in Aztec, New Mexico. Okay. So, Mr. Sevadra?
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Attorney Commissioner, this item comes before you for consideration of donations of land adjacent to the new cooperative extension service building. This would be 0.5 acres for the property that is otherwise in the name of Gossit Drive and 0.14 acres for property that currently holds retention bond. If you're willing to move forward and authorize the county manager to sign the real estate agreement.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Sevadra?
Madam Chair, I don't have any. I'd just like to make a motion to go ahead and accept a donation of that piece of property, that pond, to the county and us for us to take it over.
So does that need, do we need to say?
And if you could add to your motion that the county, you're authorizing the legal department to draw up the documents and authorize county manager Stark to sign on behalf of the commission.
Yep. Yep. Included in that motion, I move that the county takes the charge of doing the transaction. Is that good enough?
Yes. And then just have Mike's, authorize Mike Stark to sign.
And authorize Mike to go ahead and complete the transaction business.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, I have a first and a second. Is there any other conversation or question? Do we need, do anything else?
Well, we're clarifying here.
Okay.
What was your question? I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gonzalez, just wanted to make sure that included both the pond and the access.
The right of way. The access. Okay. And I'll include that, that, it's both, both pieces of property that, the, the access and, and the pond.
Okay.
To that motion.
No, still second.
The right of way.
Yep. Still second.
Madam Clerk, is that clear for you? Do we need to reset it, restate it? You okay?
Um, yeah, no, I think we're good.
Okay. All right. We're good?
Yes. Well, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
That's fine.
Commissioners, the fact that the, do you, you said it was clear as mud. Do you understand what the motion was?
The motion is to accept the donation of land adjacent to the extension building on Gossit Drive and, which includes the right of way and pond.
That's perfect. Yes.
And also to authorize legal documents to be procured and for Mike Stark to sign on behalf of the county.
You're good. Perfect. Okay. Thank you. Okay, I have a first and second. If there's no other discussion or comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Okay. All right. And at this point, we'll go ahead and adjourn.
Thank you.